Okay, we are reconvening and reporting out that we do not have anything to report from our closed session. And we will start up again at 6:30 with the regular council meeting. Okay, we will call to order the regular town council meeting of the town of Corder Madera for Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Avasio.
Here. And if you would, please join me for a salute to the flag.
Hi. Welcome to the House of Representatives of the United States of America. Public, the way we just say it. My intention, uh, in this, uh, the repeating one.
Okay, we will start with open time for public comment. Any member of the public may express to, uh, may address the town council concerning any item not on tonight's agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to address us? Come on up. And if you could state your name and where you live, that'd be great.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Richard Kalish. I live up on Addison, not far from here. And I really appreciate this opportunity to talk to you for a few minutes tonight. I start with a complaint, not about you, about PG&E. The, uh, we've, uh, the, uh, black, uh, power outages are now, uh, expected. They're regular and they're predictable. They keep happening. Uh, PG&E has a very poor record of maintaining their facilities. You're sure you remember in 2010, the San Bruno Pipeline Explosion that killed eight people and destroyed dozens of homes? PG&E was indicted by a federal grand jury for violating the Natural Gas Pipeline Safety Act and for lying to investigators who were trying to get to the bottom of it. They've been, uh, prosecuted a number of times in connection with fires because of their poor safety record. They were fined, oh, uh, just about $235 million in different matters in 19, in 2020, 2021, and 2023. They have a poor record of maintaining their equipment. They have a terrific record of public relations. I've worked with their PR people. They're really good at it. And, and, uh, the bottom line to me is that they are not to be trusted. PG&E has to be watched. And here's a request I have of this council on behalf of me and the other people who suffer without power here and are totally helpless. And the request is something that has, I've seen done before with real success, and that is to place on the agenda in a future meeting the question of power outages and invite, otherwise known as summon, PG&E to send representatives, not PR people, they'll come anyway. People responsible for their technical matters. Have them tell this council what the cause was for the last, say, six or eight outages. What was the cause? And have them tell you, one, what are they doing to address those causes so that they will not cause an outage in the future? And ask for the timeline. What is being done and when do they expect it to be completed? And then have them come back and report on a regular basis. That's my request. I've seen it done. It's, it's worked. And otherwise, really even all of us helpless. You, you are the only ones, really, that can speak for us on this matter. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kalish. And I think, as you know, we're not allowed to really discuss those things at this time, so we'll move on. If there's anybody else who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none here, is there anybody online?
No hands raised from attendees online and no email public comment for open time.
Okay, and moving on, we have no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. Uh, there is one item that has already been removed because there will be, um, some recusals, but I'm wondering, is there anything on the consent calendar that anyone on the council would like to pull off? Or anyone in the public would like to call off the calendar for the, um, consent calendar? And if not, uh, we need to hear, we need to hear from the public first. If there's, is there anybody online?
Um, no hands raised online or email public comment, um, to make comments or requests to move any items from the consent calendar.
Okay. Jim, go ahead.
I'd like to move items for A through four J.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Avasio.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Thanks very much. Okay, moving on to 4K. This is an item on the consent calendar for which, uh, there are two recusals, I believe. Mr. Beckman and I, uh, need to recuse ourselves because we are both involved in uh, constructing an ADU. Eli runs a business to construct ADUs and I'm currently under contract to build an ADU. So go ahead, Mayor, Vice Mayor Rosa. Turn it off. Uh, is there any one member of the council who would like to pull this item? Okay, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this item or pull this item from the agenda? Okay, if not, then I will entertain a motion to pass consent item 4K.
So moved. Second.
Um, Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Yes.
And then we have two recusals from, one from Mayor Avasio and one from Councilmember Beckman. Thank you without the motion carries.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, we have no public hearings tonight, uh, but moving on to business items, we will start with 6A, which is the presentation and acceptance of the Town of Corder Madera Annual Independent Audit Report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. And I'm sure we're going to hear a staff report from Daria.
Yes, thank you. Um, this item is-
Daria, could I ask you just to move the microphone a little closer? We have, we have some old hard-of-hearing people up here.
Yes, I'll speak up. Um, this item is, um, um, concerning the, the fiscal year 2324 audit. Um, the town's auditor will be making a presentation on Zoom. This is Andrew Roth. He is a partner with the Poon Group, and they have been the town's auditors for the last three years. Andrew is online.
Good evening, um, Mayor and fellow council members. I have a presentation. I'm going to share my screen right now. Oh, our presentation today is going to go over the, this, the Town of Corder Madera's, uh, financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. Some of the items will go over is kind of the scope of work, uh, our required communications, an overview of the financial statements, uh, the pension and OPEB information, as well as the audit results. So our scope of work, uh, aside for this part of the audit, and I will have a presentation on this for another one, but the scope of work for this audit is going to be the, just the financial statement audit for the Town of Corder Madera. And if needed, uh, we would be performing also for the town a single audit, which is audit federal funds that the town did not have less, did not exceed the threshold to require that audit to be performed for the, for the year. Uh, so we'll go over some required communications. These are items that are required by the auditing standards, codified auditing standard section 260. Uh, first, it's going to be responsibilities, so that there's responsibilities as part of the audit. Uh, when we engage, uh, an entity, we, uh, we, uh, there's an engagement that we kind of go through and it really goes through the auditor's responsibility, us as auditors, as well as management's responsibility. Um, so management, uh, in this, in this instance is, uh, responsible for the financial statements. Uh, they're responsible to prevent financial statements in accordance with the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America, also known as US GAAP, uh, to adopt sound accounting policies, to establish and maintain internal controls or financial reporting and compliance, to provide evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements, for the fair management's responsible for the fair presentation of financial statements that are free from material in the statements where they're due to fraud or error, and to prevent and detect fraud. Uh, auditors, we as the auditors were responsible to perform the audit in conformity with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in the government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. We're, uh, responsible to communicate with those charged with governance, um, that through a letter that we do through planning for the, uh, at the beginning of the audit as well as at the end, and also this communication. And those charged with governments in this instance would be, that would be the, the town council. Uh, we're also responsible to assess the audit risk of internal control or financial reporting, to determine the fairness of the presentation of financial statements, including those, the, the notes and disclosures, and then to end the audit to render an opinion on the financial statements. We also would issue a recommendation to management, if any, uh, and we did not have any formal written recommendations to management this year beyond just verbal discussions, but nothing that we, that would rise to the level of, that needed to be disclosed to, to the council. Um, so significant, significant accounting policies. Um, so if you really want to get a good understanding of the, the general financial statements, uh, and kind of like the reporting entity, which would be the city and any kind of like related entities, uh, and kind of how the, uh, the different policies that go into making the financial statements, uh, that would be, uh, the note one to the financial statements. Um, that is where like, where you get the best idea and kind of understanding of the financial, of these financial statements. Uh, one of that is we do note is that the town did implement GASB statement 100. That is, uh, accounting changes and air corrections. It's an amendment to GASB 60, 162. Uh, and the statements to enhance accounting and financial reporting requirements for accounting changes and air corrections, provide more understandable, reliable, relevant, consistent, comparable information for making decisions or assessing accountability. This statement did not have an effect on, as opposed to prior years, so where we had the leases two years ago, and we had Sabito last year, the subscription-based RT arrangement. Uh, this year, this did not actually have any impact on the financial statements, so, uh, that did not, was not material. So, uh, significant estimates, uh, these financial statements are required to, um, as part of these financial statements, uh, management's required to make certain estimates, uh, that are, uh, included, uh, in these financial statements. So some of the significant estimates are the fair value on investments, the depreciation on capital assets, this would kind of be like the useful life, how many years, you're like, say, a car or a building will last, and that's kind of the deferment, how would the depreciation on the capital assets? Then the two big ones, uh, that are going to be the other post-employment benefit, the OPEB, and the pension liability. Uh, both of those are really kind of actually rarely determined and determined through, um, a lot of reports, I think, that come from CalPERS or kind of experience studies, uh, so the city has less, uh, control on those specific ones, but those are larger and you will see those in the financial statements if you go to those notes. So some sensitive disclosures, as I stated, note one, you'll want to like, take a look at the summary of significant accounting policies. Um, and then two, that we always have the two big notes, that the pensions plans, as well as the other post-employment benefits. Those are two notes because they do have large balances that can vary from year to year. Um, but they're, they're very informative notes for those areas. On note 17, this can be your commitments and contingencies, so this is going to be any kind of construction commitments, I think, prior years you would have seen for the hall there, and any other kind of like large construction projects where the city did have a commitment to finish. So commitments and also any kind of contingencies and like liabilities that might exist. Um, so that's a good note. Misstatements, uh, there were no uncorrected misstatements reported during the year. That's something to be hit. We also want to communicate regarding the consultation with other accountants, so this is kind of be, uh, seeing if management went to kind of get a second opinion from somebody. Um, but the, based on our knowledge and discussion with management, there was no consultations with other accountants regarding any auditing or other matters during the audit. Also, we did not encounter any significant difficulties during the audit with management, and there are also no disagreements with management in terms of accounting treatments or the auditing procedures performed. But we'll go to the overview of the financial statements. So this is your, your government-wide statement. Um, so you'll note that, uh, the total government, the total assets, um, of your government-wide statement for 2024, uh, was about $155 million. This was an increase of about $5 million for the prior year. Um, you'll note the deferred outflows of resources, uh, ended at about 11.1 million, a decrease from a 18.1 million. Mostly, and it's all in the governmental activities. This is going to be mainly, uh, your pension and OPEB, actually determined items, as well as those, uh, contributions after the measurement date, which would be, uh, current year contributions that in the next year will be, uh, that will actually, that will, um, that were, those contributions in the next year will result in reductions in actual liability, but this year they're just, uh, they're just for outflows. And you do note a decrease here, um, because there were actually determined, uh, due to COVID, um, the couple of years after, the investment income in losses seemed to fluctuate quite a bit with, uh, with public entities, so there was a, and that's amortized over five years, so there was kind of a bit of a swing there. So that's kind of what you'll see there. Um, the liabilities, uh, increased slightly, about a million dollars to 44.3 million dollars. Um, your deferred inflows of resources ended the year with a 18.1 million, so that was a decrease from 22.7. Um, then going back to your net position, so the net investment in capital assets increased to about 5 million to, uh, to 90 million. There was, uh, capital outlets, like the city, the, the new city hall addition and some other, uh, other additions. So you'll note that, um, there was an increase there. The, uh, restricted, so there's going to be kind of any restrictions from any third parties, uh, legislation or grant restrictions, that was a slight increase of about 6.3 million. And then unrestricted, so that would just be things that didn't fall into the other areas, was about 6.4 million. And you did, there is, there is a, a negative unrestricted within the government activities, and this is primarily due to, uh, most entities have this, and this relates just to that pension and, that pension and OPEB amounts, uh, that, that are, that cause typically that unrestricted pieces because of how the funding and why not happen to, well, for GAS 68, uh, and 75 came out. So overall, net position, uh, was about the same at about 13.6 million. And one thing to understand when you do look at this government-wide statement in that position, and then also the statement of activities, which is going to be the next schedule that you're going to see, uh, these really are, um, affected strongly by those, uh, pension and OPEB amounts be, in, within the deferred inflow and deferred outflow amounts, as well as the liabilities for pension and OPEB. Um, so a lot of these deal with factors that are outside of the control of the city, so, I mean, the town, so once you, once we get to the general fund, you'll start seeing amounts that are really, that truly budgeted amounts, but, but just, uh, just so you know, once you see these, uh, amounts in the government-wide statements, that, um, the, uh, they are strongly affected by those actual assumptions for pension and OPEB. Um, so the statement of activities, you will see a decrease in expenses, um, and the expenses for, uh, there was a decrease from about 44 million to 37, and just note that part of this, part of the amount that reflected in this was those assumptions, because those amounts are, are in the government-wide, so for the OPEB and, uh, for the pension, but you'll note that there was about 37.7 million in expenses. Um, and then you have your program revenues. So the program revenues are going to be revenues that are directly, uh, allocable or that, that have direct expenses that relate to them, say, a grant agreement where you spend grant funds or a charge for services where you perform a service and you get funds. So the program revenues typically cities have a little bit more, uh, discretion on determining, like, applying for grants or, or changing any kind of fee structures for charges for services. You have a bigger ability to, to kind of, um, have an impact on those revenues. So that, that did increase to about $11 million from 9.7. So the net cost of services, so that's going to be your expenses and your directly, uh, relatable revenues that can be related to specific expenses was about 26.6. So that was a, a decrease, so the less, less, uh, net cost of service, so you'll note that, um, the less net cost of service means that, uh, the tax revenue, you'll note that, that tax revenue did increase about $3 million, so you did have a positive, um, amount there. So you'll note, um, and also the other general revenues, there was a decrease about, a lot, 3.1 million, so the overall net change, change in that position was a, uh, 268,000 the current year. For that's the government-wide statement, and that is the one affected primarily by, uh, the, those, on top of the budgeted amounts, it's affected by those, by those, uh, actual assumptions for the pension and OPEB. So the general fund, so looking at your assets, the assets, and this is going to be the main, the main fund of the city, I mean, the town, and, um, this is where you typically are going to budget. So the assets ended at about 41.6 million. That was a decrease of 1.4 million. Liabilities went up slightly to 4.4 million. Deferred inflows of resources, um, so this is going to be in kind of lease-related items, as well as unaviable revenue, uh, that decreased slightly to 11.4 million. Then your fund balance, so you're going to have your non-spendable fund balance, which, um, that will be any kind of, um, kind of, uh, prepaid and inventories, as well as any kind of, uh, like loans receivable, that's increased slightly to 89,000. Back to the restricted numbers, so your restricted fund balance, uh, was 4.3 million. Uh, decreased about 1.8 from the prior year. The committed fund balance, this is going to be, um, any kind of like, kind of rainy day funds or committed items that, uh, the town council specifically will have to commit and uncommit if they want to take it out of committed. That decreased slightly to 7.1 million. And assigned, uh, amounts was about $4 million in the current year. Um, which was an increase of about $3 million, and then unassigned, uh, ended at about, and unassigned is, assigned is going to be any amounts that are assigned by the, the level set by, um, by the town council, and that's going to be the, um, typically would be the town manager. Uh, so then the unassigned is going to be your overall, everything that doesn't fit in other buckets, decreased a little bit to 9.9 million dollars. So overall fund balance, uh, was a decrease of slightly to a 25.7 million, but still, um, still pretty strong. So looking at your, uh, general fund changes and fund balance, so there was, the revenues increased slightly, but 34.5 million. Uh, expenditures decreased, increased a little bit to 37.5 million. Um, so your total revenues over expenditures was, was at a lot, a loss of, uh, 2.9 million? And then, uh, and when you add in the, uh, you'll note the inception of the subscription and lease agreements. Those are new concepts that came about in 20 fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23. Um, those are, you know, those are slight, slight changes, and that, that would mean there was new software, uh, subscription agreements, about 99,000, so overall net change in that position was 2.8 million for the general fund. So to get to the pension and OPEB information. So we will note that, um, the, this is going to be your proportionate share, so, uh, for your miscellaneous and safety plan, if there was an increase and a decrease of 1% from that 6.9%. Um, there was, over the last few years, there were changes from CalPERS that did decrease the amount, so the amount typically, the percentage of that discount rate is typically going down. So you'd be more looking on the left side here versus the right, but, but overall, looking at your fiduciary net position, that is the amount of fiduciary assets that you have, uh, the fiduciary assets that to pay off those total is about 92.5 million. Um, so there's a slight decrease in the prior year, but it is, it is a lot higher than pretty much most cities, so you're, um, almost 100% funded there. So that is solid, but you'll note that if there was a decrease and the percentage that you would, would go up, uh, a few million, and the other way around, you'd have an asset on that, uh, that should be over 100% funded. So the OPEB plan, uh, that sensitivity analysis, you're going to note a similar, uh, similar trend if you were to, uh, decrease in this. This, uh, this discount rate can vary depending on the actuary, um, and, uh, kind of depending on different factors. The, the CalPERS one really is set by CalPERS and kind of the board, but this one can change, but you'll note that there isn't as much of a change on this if you were to, if you were to see, but you do see two different, uh, sensitivity analysis here. You're going to see a sensitivity analysis. If the discount rate changes, that means that the amount on, of, uh, interest or investment income to be earned on any assets, uh, increased, that you would have less of a liability, but if healthcare trends increase, like the price of healthcare, then you'll know there's going to be an increase. So, but you will know from year to year, there was a increase of the funded portion, uh, of about 9%, so you're about 72%. So you have about, uh, three quarters of the required amount to pay off that. But it is a bit lower of a liability typically than the, when you put those pension plans together, so. Lot of results. So our audit results this year, the opinion, there's unmodified opinions issued on all opinion units. Uh, this is a clean opinion. This is what you're looking for. Uh, with that, you're, with that, it states that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. The accounting policies have been consistently applied. Estimates used are reasonable, and disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. We also note that there was no disagreements with management. There was no material weaknesses or significant efficiencies identified in internal control or financial reporting or compliance. No accounting issues and inappropriate activities were noted as well during the audit. That is my presentation. Any questions? Feel free to ask.
Thank you very much, Andrew. So we'll start with, uh, quite endless, Daria, would you want to have, do you need some, need some time to say some additional things? Adam, you're okay? All right, are there any questions from the council for either Andrew or our?
Yeah, I've got one. Uh, on page 19, under the governmental activities, they, there's a loss on disposable, disposal of capital assets of 5.874 million, and I can tie that number back to, I think it's page,
I,
page 62, where it's structures and improvements, and I'm just trying to figure out what exactly that was.
Um, the, the previous, the old city hall was not fully depreciated when you guys, when you guys, uh, added the new city hall. So that old city hall structure, I think, which was replaced, was removed, based on my knowledge. That is.
We put that up in 1920.
Well, there was a, there were, yeah, there were improvements, uh, several years ago, and we removed the old city hall because it was demolished and then added the new one.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Jim? Rose?
I've got just one question. It can be either, um, for staff or for either of our two council members who also, um, have served on our finance committee. I was just curious. Um, why do we maintain a $2 million pension reserve outside of and in addition to our $3.8 million Pension Stabilization Trust and our OPEB trust? Um, I guess my question is just, why is there this additional reserve as opposed to just taking that money and depositing it into one of our existing pension trusts?
Uh, the reason why is if you put it in the pension trust, it would be,
Is your mic on?
Yes, if you put it into the 115 trust, it will fluctuate with the market based on how that trust is invested, and the 2 million is in, in effect, a money market fund. So if we need the cash, we'll, you know, we'll get it dollar for dollar. So it's, that, that was the chief reason.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I can remember to that, money's earning four or five percent, I think, right now, isn't it? It's a high rate, rate of return. I just have a couple. Um, I know you don't have a crystal ball. It looks like pension liability went up, excuse me, about a million, two or so. Do you see that trending up in the future?
Um, I, I, I don't, it's, I don't know. I think I have a crystal, I, I don't. As I stated, they're going towards lower, lowering the rate, not raising the rate, so, um, and I honestly want to give it a couple of years because we really, with COVID, we got hit by such like, it was all over the place, kind of those investments. So it's really, even, even if you do like ratio analysis and you're trying to look at it, it's just trying to like, seeing this curvy line, so I, I can't make a good assumption on that. You'd probably have to go talk to somebody a little bit, a little bit higher than me on the totem pole to figure that one out, but, and I don't have a crystal ball, obviously, because who knows what's going to happen with the economy.
Daria?
Yes, um, I did go to CalPERS in, um, October to a forum they had there in San Diego and asked them, I met personally with our actuary, and, um, the most recent actuarial report, the one that's reflected here, is from, uh, based on the returns of June of 2023. The returns for June of 2024 were 9.3% rather than, um, the 6.8% discount rate. So I asked the actuary if we could expect, um, a decrease next year, and, you know, once these are included, and he did say yes. And you know, once these are included, and he did say yes, but that's only for that one year. You know, he obviously wasn't going to commit to anything beyond that. So next year might be a slight decrease.
Thanks, and I appreciate the honest answer. One, one other question for you. It looks like we're running about forty four million in long-term debt and obligations. Is that somewhat typical for a town our size?
Everyone, uh, everyone has their uh, kind of like a different debt portfolio on, on needs. Um, I think it's more on like the ability to kind of to pay it off and kind of, I think uh, I think it's, and the big thing, what you guys got to understand, you have pension obligation bonds. And uh, if you didn't have those pension obligation bonds, then you just have that, a pension that was seventeen million dollars more, more higher, you know, so it's just you got, you want to have the apple in the bonds or you want to have the apples, but it's more of a financing decision. I'd say if you took out the pension obligation bond, you're pretty close, but that you with the pension obligation bond, you guys almost have a fully funded pension. So, but, so a lot of people, if you were to take that out, would have, you'd be pretty much close to everyone else. But it's like, where do you want to have the liability in the debt? Or do you want to have it in the pension? So I don't think it's really, but I think without that you are comparable, even with that, in general, you're comparable because a lot of other people are, don't have, they have a lot higher pensions, a lot lower funded ratios, but they don't have the bonds. So that's the only difference.
Okay, thanks. It's all, thanks.
Jim, you have another question?
Well, let me see. Somewhere in here, I recall reading the expected returns by, in effect, asset class at CalPERS. Uh, am I correct in remembering that they were projecting that fixed incomes were going to generate seven point nine percent uh, returns over sort of the projection period?
I think the fixed income in our report does combine a few categories. There's like several different fixed incomes. I'd have to double check that. I could get back to you on that, though.
Okay. And I'd just point out that the long US Treasury is between four and five percent yield, so.
It does change each year. I can, I can look it up and get back to you on that.
Any other questions?
I just have one, kind of out of the box, but I know we've all heard about what happened on the county level at the Marin Housing Authority when suddenly nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars just disappeared off the books and they have no idea where it went, but they say it's a cybercrime. How do we make sure that we're not vulnerable to that kind of thing? Okay, um, several things. We did have some checks that were stolen out of the mail, which we have been fully um refunded for, but from the bank. And in response to that, we implemented what they call positive pay, where the bank will not pay any checks or any ACH without us sending a list in advance. And if something does not appear on the list, they send us every day, if there's any items, they send us um, uh, an email, you know, asking us to approve or, or not um, some of those items. So we've done that. Every um, wire transfer requires two um, two people, you know, myself um, or one of the other two people in the finance department to approve them. Um, the direct deposits now, we have, everybody has to go online to make any changes to their direct deposit account or come in personally and speak with Donna or Stacy. We don't just allow people to call up on the phone. Um, we also, if we get any like suspicious emails at all or, or any emails at all, we um, we call the people to verify that they really did send that. Or, you know, we just ask people, you know, if somebody, sometimes we get strange emails, you know, purporting to be from Adam or something, you know, or a member of the council. Most of the time it's obvious that it's, you know, it's just a fake email. But we, we would ask them, we, yes, we're, we're pretty um strict about that, especially after those checks were stolen out of the mail.
So you think we have safeguards in place?
Yeah, and we're, and we're improving those safeguards all the time. And that was one of the, we'll be talking about this, I think, in the future regarding sort of just making sure everybody who has a town email is doing the cybersecurity trainings.
Mm-hmm.
We're actually just talking about removing some of our boards and committees from that because we're not getting full compliance on that part, piece of the cybersecurity training. So, um, but we're constantly evaluating that. And then we also participate in, um, we have the two different levels of cybersecurity insurance through our risk pool that we participated in and we did purchase the um, I think the enhanced cyber risk, um, which is support should a cybercrime occur to support us, but also to uh capture, um, recapture sort of funds by this, that service. But it's all, but I will say it's, it's not, nothing is full proof, right?
Right, you know, it sounds like you're, you're working on it. That's all I, that's what I needed.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, yeah, Jim.
Okay, uh, when you're doing wire, when you, when you log in, is there a two-factor authentication? Where, you know, you give the bank your user ID password and they come back and add with a?
I don't believe so. We put in, we put in our own information. I don't think that they do ask for a second. I could, I could request that they do so. Um, but it does require it to be um, approved by another employee. Like, I can't just send wires. I, you know, nobody can. They have to be um, approved by a second employee. And for the wires, most of them, I, I think all of them pretty much are, they're preset. We've, we've told the bank, you know, it's like to the, the Lath account that we're going to invest in or it's to the city of Larkspur for police services, or it's to, you know, our debt service people. They're all preset and we have arranged them with the bank. I, I can't, um.
Two people have to approve.
Yes, two people have to approve it. Yeah, all of them.
Not, not just the wire, but also the wire instructions.
Yes, yes, yes.
Good.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Uh, is that, are you?
And then, okay, when you call, when somebody sends you a change of email, do you call the number from your Rolodex, which will show my age? Or if somebody has a phone number on the email, which number would you call?
Well, you usually, you, usually what I do when I get any sort of email with a phone number or somebody I don't know, I look up that company online and see if that email, I mean, if that phone number matches the one they're giving me. And if it doesn't, I look up that phone number to see what it's going to be.
Okay, good. You're properly paranoid.
Properly paranoid. That sounds like a good uh, position to take.
Hey, Pat, can I just make a quick comment or otherwise I can wait till comment on the cybersecurity?
Comments in just a minute. So is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on the audit or on the financial report we've just heard? And if not, is there anybody online?
We don't have any hands raised online from attendees and we didn't receive any emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, so we'll come back to the council for comments and a possible motion.
This is just a comment on the wire part. I would just be, I know you're cautious, just be extremely cautious. It's not the internal control where you're having dual authentication, two employees are looking at, it's the external threat. Um, there's another agency in Marin that did a large wire transfer. And when they did that transfer, they were getting calls from supposedly an escrow agent that knew employees' names and they knew the type of transaction, the dollar amount and all that kind of stuff. So again, I'm not worried about the internal controls. It's the external threat that you have to be aware of. And with that, I can go ahead and make a motion to uh, prove the um, two thou, I don't have it in front of me, sorry, two thousand and twenty four audit report. Thanks.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, so coming up next, this will be a disappointment from those who are here from the chamber and I apologize. But in order to deal with the uh, financial audits that we have been asked to look at tonight, we are going to adjourn this meeting temporarily, recess this meeting temporarily. And um, we're going to hold the sanitary district number two meeting, which also includes an audit. So we're going to make this as quick as we can, but we're going to take a little sidestep. A tour. Okay, um, so I'm calling to order the sanitary district two meeting. Uh, do we need a roll call?
Um, I'll go ahead and handle that. Board member Andrews? We're calling to order this.
I'm here.
Board member Beckman?
Here.
Board member Casissa?
Here.
Vice President Thomas?
Here.
President Ravazio?
Here. Okay, open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the district board concerning any item not on the agenda. Do we have anyone from the audience who would like to address the sanitary district board? Seeing none, are there any online?
No, um, hands raised from attendees online and no emailed public comment for open time.
And thank you very much. Seeing no presentations, we move on to the consent calendar where there is just one item, the minutes from the December third, twenty twenty four sanitary district board meeting. Um, does anyone need to pull this from the consent calendar on the council or in the public or online? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion, move the consent calendar.
Second.
And I will just announce there were no um, public comment requests. Um, no, there was no public comment and no request to pull the item from the consent calendar. Um, and with that, I will call the role, board member Andrews?
Yes.
Board member Beckman?
Yes.
Board member Casissa? Vice President Thomas?
Here.
President Ravazio?
Yes. Okay, getting to our one business item, the presentation and acceptance of the sanitary district number two annual independent audit report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Daria?
Thank you. This audit was also performed by the Poon Group, um, and Andrew Roth will present this audit as well.
I'm back. Hi. Good evening, uh, um, sanitary district board members. Um, we are here, I just, I just did, just for your information, I did go through and edit the, the slides to remove those that we did go over. But I did add a slide about our audit approach. So you'll get a little bit of, a little bit different, uh, like a different piece, but we're not going to be going over anything that we already did. Cause uh, we did since going over the town, uh, the sanitary district is a major fund in the town. So we do audit in town financials, the actual, that fund. So, uh, so any of the information we did disclose on the uh, the prior uh, slides, it's going to be like around the any kind of auditor responsibility communication. I just want you to know it's the same here. So, but I just, I know we want to go through it fast. So I didn't want to have you guys have to hear, hear it twice. Um, so sanitary edition number two for the audit uh, for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Uh, kind of go through the scope of work. We'll go through that approach to the audit and it's going to be approached for the sanitary district as well as the, the regular town. I just want to give you a little different taste of what we're kind of like to explain in the presentation. So, we'll go over the overview of financial statements and audit results. So our scope of work uh, was an audit, the annual financial report for the sanitary district. That's going to include your statement in that position, statement of revenues, expenses and changes in that position, statement of cash flows and then the net notes for the basic financial statements. Our approach to audit, um, so our approach to audit of the sanitary district, um, and also the town. Uh, so phase one, that's going to be our detailed planning phase. Uh, in this phase, kind of we'll, we'll uh, interview, have being a returning client with the town, uh, kind of getting an update on any uh, key changes in either processes or personnel. Um, kind of getting an, an understanding of any major changes in the environment, be it um, technology environment, be it the, the economic environment of the area. Um, after that phase, we'll take all that information and we'll go into our brisk base review of uh internal controls or systems and compliance. So that's going to be your financial reporting. That's going to include like bank reconciliations, year-end closed processes, budget, budget amendments. Uh, the revenue, so it's going to be any kind of uh, billings, revenue recognition, cash receipts, expense, expenses, so it's going to be your purchasing, uh, your accounts payable and your cash disbursements, uh, payroll and related liabilities. That will include um, I, I also HR, uh, human resources as well as uh, kind of many kind of pension and OPEB related. Just so we do that set, the census data that's going to be provided to actuaries to um, to review to determine those balances. Um, also we'll go over the general IT controls. So we do go over kind of like the, just the general IT controls of the city and whatnot. So phase three, that's going to be our valid, phase three would be considered our year end. So phase two typically we call interim. So that's what we're doing before six thirty the year end date. Phase three, that's going to be our validation of the account balances. We do this with confirmations, substantive audit procedures, analytical procedures. And then phase four is going to be our preparation of financial statements, initiations of the audit opinions. For overview of financial statements. So in twenty twenty four, uh, you'll note that the total assets did increase about nine hundred thousand hours. So to about thirty eight point three million, uh, total liabilities decreased slightly to two hundred and thirty thousand. The net investment capital assets noted an increase um, of two point five million. So that's going to be an investment in those capital assets. The emergency reserve is unchanged and the unrestricted uh, did decrease about one million dollars. Uh, and that, that overall, that's the remaining portion and that's typically, that's related specifically to um, some of those uh, net investment capital asset items increased. Um, so, and your net investment in capital asset does match your non-current assets. So you will note that those are, because you do not have any debt related to those assets. So overall, in that position did increase about one point four million dollars from, for your sewer district, for sanitary district number two. Um, so this is going to be your operating revenue. You noted an increase. It's pretty steady, about three point two million dollars. Those operating expenses, uh, about six point four, so a slight increase about, well, close to five hundred thousand dollars. So the operating, the operating income loss, um, this, we note that there is a loss, but that is an understanding because we do put those uh, the property taxes uh, that are kind of charge sources, but they kind of just, the general part of those are in non-operating. So you really want to look at the, the change in that position as opposed to the operating income loss. That's just how, uh, that's how the, but kind of US uh, generally accepted auditing, uh, generally accepted accounting principles have it where that, that actually should be in the non-operating. So um, overall, though, your net change in that position was about forty thousand dollars off of the prior year. So there wasn't much change, but it was an increase of about one point four million dollars. And those, you want to have a positive change in that position because you do need to accumulate uh, kind of reserves for future uh, for future expenses related to uh, capital improvements and stuff like that in the system. So your audit results are going to be unmodified opinion as well. So this can be clean opinions, this is what you're looking for. This is going to be a, it's really, it states that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material specs. The significant accounting policies have been consistently applied. Estimates are reasonable. Disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. Also, we noted there's no disagreements in management, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the internal control were noted. And we had no, we noted no accounting issues. So the same result as the, as the town. And that is my presentation.
Thank you, Andrew, very much. And we'll come to the council for any questions. Anything down here? Anything? Jim, Rosa?
Well, uh, would it be possible for me to get a copy of the slides he's presenting tonight?
Yeah, I can send those over.
Thank you.
Okay, anything, any other questions? Opening it up to the public now. Is anyone in the public wanting to talk about the sanitary district audit? And if not, is there anyone online?
We do not have any hands raised from attendees online or emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, then now's an opportunity to comment or make a motion that we accept this audit?
Will we accept?
Second.
Board member Andrews?
Yes.
Board member Beckman?
Yes.
Board member Casissa?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Ravazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, next, just real briefly, district manager and board member reports. Is there someone who will give a district manager report? I'm, I'm getting the hint that it might be Rebecca, or I know you're moving in.
No, no report.
Okay, no report. Any report from any board members? All right. And is there any discussion of the draft agenda for the upcoming board meeting? And so with that, I will adjourn the sanitary district meeting. And we will move back to the town council for which we were in recess. If I can find the correct paperwork. All right, next up is six B, the one we've been waiting for. Uh, consideration and possible adoption of resolution approving the Corte Madera Chamber of Commerce twenty twenty five budget and financial statements for the years ending uh, December twenty third, twenty two, twenty three and December thirty one, twenty twenty two. Recommended uh, that we adopt the resolution as requested. Do we have a staff report? Recommended, uh, that we adopt the resolution as requested. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Rivasio and council members. Um, in nineteen eighty nine, the voters approved measure E to increase the transient occupancy tax, or TOT, to allocate twenty percent of the TOT to the Chamber of Commerce, um, to support economic promotion of local businesses and community activities, expenses incurred in connection with the annual Fourth of July celebrations, chamber office base rental and operational overhead, and any additional items approved by the town council in future resolutions. For this purposes, uh, the TOT revenue fluctuates annually based on hotel occupancy. Um, and following the voter approval of the measure E, the town council adopted resolution twenty five eleven on March sixth, nineteen ninety, and that resolution is included with this agenda item. That resolution established an agreement with rules and regulations under which the TOT revenues would be transferred to and spent by the chamber. One of those provisions was that in December of each year, the chamber is required to present their annual budget along with their current financial statements to the town council. And the council in turn are asked to review and approve the chamber's plan for expenditure of the TOT revenues for the following year. And the council can prioritize the purposes and associated expenditures if desired. The chamber's executive director Julie Kritzberger is here this evening. She's provided the chamber's twenty twenty five proposed budget for review. And unique this year, and that will be discussed further in this presentation, is that there are two scenarios presented due to the uncertainty of the continued operation of the Best Western Corte Madera Inn. The town's finance director has approved of the format of the budget as required by resolution twenty five eleven. And also included with this item is a cover letter where Julie details the chamber's twenty twenty four accomplishments, including digital growth, community engagement activities, membership growth, and economic impact achieved, and outlined anticipated challenges for discussion, including the TOT uncertainty, um, the depleted reserves, the need for office relocation, and diminished funding for July fourth festivities. Um, now our town manager Adam Wolf has a couple of thoughts to share, and then we'll bring Julie up.
Yeah, thank you, uh, mayor and council members. Um, just real quickly, I, I think, big picture, this is a relatively narrow, uh, discussion tonight. Although I can certainly understand that the report and some of the findings in the report, and certainly that you'll hear from, uh, Julie about tonight may, may give rise to some further questions. And I would just, um, keep in mind that we certainly can schedule something in the future. You know, uh, to get into the details and, and further discuss how, um, maybe to sort of address some of the concerns that are raised in the report tonight. So, um, with that, we will turn it over to, uh, Julie Kritzberger from the chamber.
Julie, come on up. We have Stan Hoffman as well, who is on the board.
Good evening, um, I'm not Julie, I'm, I'm, I'm Stan Hoffman, um. I'm the general manager of the village of Corte Madera, and I've been a member of the chamber's board of directors since September of nineteen eighty six. And, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna present this together, this, this is Julie. Uh, anyway, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, council members and town staff. We're here tonight to present the chamber's twenty twenty five budget and share with you our financial situation. Since the passage of measure E in nineteen eighty nine, the chamber has been responsible for Corte Madera's costs of the Independence Day event, including police, public works, security, liability insurance, tents, stages, and more. Prior to measure E, the chamber had numerous volunteers to assist with the parade and other chamber programs. And the town worked closely with us to coordinate the parade and all of the associated activities. The main source of our funds are from the TOT, which has been reduced since COVID. The chamber has cut staff to just our executive director Julie, who is now solely responsible for putting on the Independence Day event, which includes the parade, the art fair, the food booths, entertainment, children's activities, coordinating with police, public works, Redwood High, our security provider, and more. All of this is in addition to Julie running the entire chamber all by herself, regularly working nights and weekends. Most events of this kind are put on by significantly larger staffs with significantly larger budgets. Several years ago, we anticipated that the Best Western renovation would temporarily impact our income, so we started reserving funds to get us through the construction. But those funds have been used to subsidize the chamber since tourism has not rebounded to pre-COVID levels, and our reserves are now almost gone. Effective January thirty first of twenty twenty five, we've been asked to vacate our office at town center, and we are hopefully, uh, we are hopeful to find alternative space here in town. The purpose of the chamber is to promote our business community and to maintain a strong and vibrant environment. In addition to the Fourth of July event, our one-person office Julie is responsible for several mixers, ribbon cuttings, the annual golf tournament, our annual silent auction, the candidates forum, membership drives, the shop local campaign, promoting tourism through our new video, upgrading our website, our annual audit, as well as the day-to-day activities such as paying bills, invoicing our members, banking, accounting, et cetera. Based on significantly higher expenses and significantly reduced income, this situation is no longer viable, and without additional funds, the future of the parade as well as the future of our chambers in jeopardy. We look forward to working with the town to find some reasonable solutions to keep our parade and chamber afloat and hope to do so at a future time. Uh, thank you, and we're available to answer any questions.
Council, are there any questions at this time? So the budget was actually in the staff report, did everyone have a chance to review it?
I did, but it's entered a, in effect, a contingent budget, because you've got a couple of serious unknown in there. And so if we accept the budget, we should probably, we should probably qualify the acceptance that we expect you to come back with a revised budget once the uncertainties have been, have been, uh, reduced or clarified.
Well, w- we, we believe that the, the funds will get us through twenty twenty five. Um, that's our hope anyway, and we'll continue to operate until we're out of funds.
Okay.
But at some point, uh, prior to that happening, we hope to work with the, with the town council, see if there are any supplemental funds available.
That's what I was thinking, that you probably need to come back and if, if you have to rent office space somewhere, uh, you're gonna have to come back to us.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to amend the budget, it's apparently been presented.
Okay.
That said, the, the office may be Julie's dining room table, uh, although we're working with, uh, with, with, uh, Adam Wolf to see if there's any, uh, vacant space in town to use.
If we can just do questions now and then comments when we come back, any questions?
Other question for Adam, um, just for clarity, what's the relationship between the town and the chamber?
Yeah, uh, um, thanks for the question. I think that's really actually outlined in the staff report. It's really this voter-approved measure, um, which was, uh, codified essentially in our municipal code. So there's a section in our municipal code that outlines that the TOT tax, twenty percent of the TOT tax goes to the chamber for certain purposes, and that municipal code outlines, um, sort of a baseline level of what the expectation is for the expenditures of the, that TOT tax that they receive. So that's the July fourth event, there, it lists overhead and rent. And, um, I think there was one other thing that it lists in the municipal code. And then it also, in the municipal code says, and as, uh, further determined, um, through future resolutions by the town council. So the town council, subsequent to the voter-approved measure in the municipal code, adoption of the ordinance, adopted resolution twenty five eleven, I think it was in nineteen ninety, which more or less, I think, just gave a little bit more color to the actual expectations of the council at that time for how, um, the responsibilities, uh, for the July fourth event. And, um, it also included the other things in, in the municipal code about, um, paying for overhead, uh, administrative costs, um, and so on. And then, uh, also in the resolution said, we would like to see this meeting happen in December where we accept the budget. And I will say, it's a little bit muddled, because I think the wording could be improved in that resolution, where the chamber has more funds than just the TOT tax for its budget, they also have a board. So I think really the intent was for, um, the town council to review that portion of the chamber budget that is essentially the TOT tax that the town um, provides to the chamber, not necessarily the entirety of the budget, because there is no real direct relationship between, uh, the town and the other, um, funds that it receives through fundraisers and whatnot, uh, and then those expenditures that they, they have.
So, so just summarize, they're completely separate entity from town, town has no control over them. The only thing we do is provide them the TOT funds.
Correct, they have their own board, e- exactly, so we don't.
Okay.
Separate nonprofit, you know, separate nonprofit organization. But I wanted to explain that sort of the connects, there is a connection through the funding.
Right, but that's it, so we, there's, we don't provide any oversight, can't tell them what to do or anything like that.
No, but obviously, no, I mean, it's more of an informal, obviously, long-term relationship.
Right, that part I get. And then a question for maybe Julie, um, on your budget for the Fourth of July parade, does Lark, City of Larkspur provide any funding for that parade?
They pay for half of security and the police and, uh, five thousand dollars towards marching bands.
Okay. And then Daria, you probably, have you noticed a ramp up in the expenses? Again, this ties back to the budget in the last like four or five years, just for police security, other types of expenses?
Well, the, uh, employees' wages, of course, that are charged to the Fourth of July, that goes up. Um, the chamber reimburses the town for that, um, they reimburse us for half of Flores, that goes up, you know? Um, and then there's always rental items, um, you know, to close off streets and things like that. Um, but the chamber does reimburse the town for a lot of it. Um, what it doesn't reimburse the town for are, um, is the special insurance that we buy, which goes up, of course, a few hundred dollars every year for the event.
And that's us, the town's buying that, or is that the chamber?
No, the town, the town pays for that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Anything, Eli?
No questions.
I just have one. Uh huh. So, um, other than the Fourth of July festivities, is there any other thing that the chamber puts on that is in service to the town directly? Like I would say, you know, the other events that you, um, host are to help the business owners, whereas the Fourth of July could be seen as something that promotes the town itself. Perhaps, I don't know if that's the right way to look at it, but I'm just wondering, expense-wise, um, is that the only relationship between the town and the chamber that is something that serves the town in that way?
Well, our, our, our role is to promote the business community. And, and of course, the town of Corte Madera greatly benefits from the success of the business community. So, to answer your question, yes, our existence benefits the entire community with the sales tax that, that are generated, um, you know, by our, by our very, very vibrant business community. Uh, tha- that said, as far as other events, I mean, you know, we, we put on countless events and we put on countless fundraisers uh, to supplement the TOT funds. I, I, I do want to clarify something, that the town purchases liability insurance, we purchase liability insurance. What was the bill this year? It's, w- we pay a significant amount for liability for the parade. And just to clarify, pre, uh, measure E, the town paid for police and public works and all of this stuff. So measure E just simply, you know, switched the, the bill from coming to you to coming to us. Uh, and we pay for it out of the TOT funds that comes from you, so it's a little confusing. But, but our goal is to have a vibrant business community, which we have.
Okay, I have one question, do you have another question?
Just have a follow-up question, um, on the parade, it's Corte Mera Larkspur Parade, right? So there's no name recognition for the chamber?
No, it's the Twin Cities Independence Day Parade, um, it's the towns' parade. Uh, we're, we're simply the tool that, that puts it on on behalf of the town.
Okay, thanks.
So my question, um, is, has anyone done research, either the chamber or staff, into what some of the other chambers of commerce is in Marin are doing? I know San Anselmo has a very active chamber, so does Mill Valley, Larkspur has some new, um, e- energy going there. Do you know how the other communities fund these kinds of events? I mean, is there a way we can look into what others do? Because I don't, you know, there's some of the older people who were around when the TOT tax thing went through, and they're saying, I don't know if that was a good idea now, because they vary so much. Whereas we want the chamber to have a nice, steady, you know, activity level, not tied to TOT. So, h- how do other chambers do it?
I don't know of any other chambers in Marin that put on a parade or a festival like we do. The Nevada has an art and wine festival, but they don't do a parade.
Well, Mill Valley does the Memorial Day Parade, and they also do the Big Music Festival, which is huge.
But the chamber does not do the parade.
The chamber doesn't?
No.
Who does it?
I'm not sure, but it's, it's not the.
It's also certainly information, if, again, if.
Yeah, it would be good to do some, some research, I'd be happy to help with that.
To the council.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this is going to be a two-step process, and I appreciate, oh wait, we shouldn't be talking about solutions right now. So any more questions? Any questions from the public for the Chamber of Commerce? Any questions online?
We don't have any hands raised, um, from attendees online or email public comment for this item.
Okay, coming back to comments, what I was saying is, obviously, this is a longer process than tonight. Um, does anyone else have any comments for Julie, Eli?
Yeah, thank you. Oh, first, I just want to thank Julie and Stan and the rest of the chamber board for, for the work that you guys do. I, I thought it, it was striking to me in, in really going through the budget here to see that the Fourth of July parade is about twenty-three percent of the chamber's annual expenses, so really substantial. Um, and that despite it being, uh, widely called the Larkspur Corte Madera Parade, Larkspur pays for fifteen percent of it, it sounds like. Um, so I'm, I'm, you know, obviously, that's, this is not the discussion we're getting into tonight. Um, but I think that this does, uh, reinforce the point that was made earlier tonight, that I, I think we do need a larger discussion, um, you know, probably first laying out what is the scope of work that we want to see the Corte Madera Chamber of Commerce provide. And once we have that scope of work, um, you know, between community events and, uh, and, you know, activities that support the business community that we want to see, then we can start to talk about, uh, staffing and funding and how to actually make it happen. Um, and, and, you know, and, and I think bringing into that conversation, like any other players, potential like community groups that might contribute, things like that. Um, and I would agree with Pat's call for, um, additional information to help inform that discussion when we're able to have it. Um, just kind of looking comparatively at what, what do the chambers of commerce in neighboring cities look like? How are they structured? How are they funded? What do they do? Um, and then same thing for like major community events in those cities. What are the big community events that these cities are putting on? How are they funded? Who runs them? Um, what does the partnership look like? So, I, I would love to see us get into this discussion, uh, maybe at the, at the strategic planning session, might be a good time to do that. Would certainly love if we could have Julie and, and any, uh, interested board members from the chamber join us for that. But turning back to the narrow question tonight of just approving the chamber budget, um, and giving any prioritization or any feedback on prioritization for spending the portion of the budget that comes from, um, our additional TOT. Um, I certainly would, would support approving the budget. Um, I think there are some real, like, difficult realities that are, that are made clear in the budget. But obviously, um, we are where we are right now, and we have to start, you know, by accepting reality, approving the budget, and then from there, we can, we can look at solutions. Um, so I would definitely support, uh, approving the budget as proposed. And in terms of any direction, um, I don't think that I have any. I don't think that I have any particular direction to add at this time, especially thinking, you know, understanding that we'll hopefully be able to have that longer discussion, maybe, you know, next month. I don't think I have any further direction to add right now. I would just support approving the budget as proposed.
Yeah, I would agree in terms of approving the budget. I realize in my, the way I'm thinking of it, this is sort of a contingent budget based on further conversations where the hotel shut, you know, closes, then we might have to come up with additional funding and so on. Also, I'm sort of hesitant to get too involved in your actual operations in that you're a separate organization and I don't want to get you feeling like we're trying to micromanage you, even though, you know, we're just one of your many funding sources. So anyway.
Thank you, Jim. Anything, Rosa?
Just that, you know, I support accepting the audit and accepting the budget as it exists. And like with whenever we approve budgets, a lot of times there are amendments later. So you know, this, this is, this would be no different. So I'm up for approving what we have before us tonight.
And just a couple of comments for me, if I could. Oh, you want to go first?
If you know, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead. Okay, I'll go ahead. I agree that Larkspur's been getting a bit of a free ride on our parade. Not only do they pay much less for all of the work that the Cordera Chamber does, but the parade starts over in Larkspur. So they get the best half of the parade by far. It's when everybody's cheerful and happy and still got a few pieces of candy to hand out. I know we're not supposed to do that, Julie, but so I do think we need to talk to Larkspur and, and negotiate something there. And also Adam has this great idea to do this volunteer fair in the spring. And you mentioned that you used to have a volunteer committee that helped put the parade on. And I think we could go back to that. I heard from a lot of people after the Fourth of July parade that they would love to help work on it and contribute ideas and, and floats. And maybe if we have a little extra money, we can hire some bands. So we don't have to have the fundraising cheerleaders that slow things down and so forth. So hopefully the volunteer fair in the spring will be a turning point on that. And the only thing I would like to say as far as timing is the whole chamber relationship with the town is a conversation that should happen on its own. And I don't think making it part of the work plan, I mean, is the right, getting into the details at the work plan meeting is not a good idea. I think we should schedule the chamber meeting for a time when we can really, you know, go into it. I think it should be part of the work plan to help the chamber and figure out how to help the chamber. But I'm not sure that we should have the in the weeds conversation at that day or. So is there a motion? Oh, wait, Fred had a other comment.
Yeah, I just want to thank Stan, both you and Julie, and also your board. I know you have a couple of members that are here tonight. I think you guys are really an integral part of the town, not just the town, but also what you provide to the community. So I appreciate all the hard work that the chamber's done over the years. The only thing I can support the budget as is the way it is right now. The only direction I would give to staff is we need to be proactive on this. And I think there is a sense of urgency. Because when I see funds could run out by the end of 25, that means they could run out sooner. So it's something where I don't want to be, I wouldn't want to be sitting here a year from now, still trying to figure this out. And that's what I mean, but I know we're not getting into it. But there is a sense of urgency. So I just want to reinforce that, that we need to be proactive on this. And I'm sorry, one other thing also. When we start bringing up things like, you know, getting more information, I think that's all good. But that Julie can help with that. But I think that the town needs to partner with the chamber to get to gather information and not just have the chamber where it should not be a one sided conversation. It needs to be two sided. So there needs to be a partnership with, with the chamber to figure, help figure this stuff out.
Can I just comment on that and just being proactive? Julia and I have had many conversations over the last, I guess, four to six months. I don't know. I have been working already on, on sort of some solutions on the rental side, knowing that she's been going to be, I guess, call it evicted from her current space at the end of January. So that's underway with potential cost savings upwards of, I don't know, 15 to 20,000 there. So we're starting, we've started the conversation. I would call those proactive, but certainly take the comment and understand that we need to continue to work together to try to find solutions.
And Fred just reminded me of one other question that I've been sort of stewing around. When you've been working to support the businesses, which I think are excellent, the mixers and the ribbon cuttings and things really add some excitement. I've noticed that most of the activity happens out at the shopping malls and many people in town have, are crying out that we need a more active and vibrant downtown. And I'm just wondering if you have future plans to do. I, I remember Charles Lee reporting in at one point last year, saying the chamber was looking at the old square and, and what you could do for that. And if you can just comment on that, that would be great.
Well, one thing that we're doing for the square is the Visitors Bureau is we partner with the town to give them all membership to the Visitors Bureau so they can promote the, their activities and the things at Old Cordera Square for them. So that's one thing that we've been doing.
Okay. And ribbon cuttings and things like the new, the new, okay, I'm sorry, we're getting off subject. We'll save that for later. Way off, says Rosa. Okay.
And with that, if there's no further discussion, I'm happy to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 462024, approving the Cordera Chamber of Commerce 2025 budget and their audited financial statements for the years ending December 31st, 2023 and 2022.
Second, oh, second from Rosa.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Ovazio?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carried.
Thank you all for reining me in. Thank you, Stan. Thank you. Thank you both very much. Uh, next up is number 6C, discussion and review of the 2024 work plan with Adam.
Great. This is this is actually an item that I'm happy to present this evening to the town council. And it's similar to an item, I think last year was the first year that staff had pulled this sort of review of the work plan from the actual strategic planning workshop session and sort of pulled it out so that we would actually have a little bit more time not to focus on the past, but focus on the future when we get into our strategic planning sessions. So thought it would be appropriate time at the end of this year. I think we did it in January last year, but moved it up to December. So we're not quite done with the year, obviously, but we're very close. And, you know, I didn't have, I think, taken it upon myself to speak for the rest of staff as well. I know several of them would love to sort of be, have the opportunity to talk about many of the accomplishments, but I've asked them to just give me a couple of highlights as well, or just maybe the most significant highlight from each of the departments. Just to touch on tonight, but there's a lot in here. I don't intend to go into every particular item. I think you see in the attachment, I tried to fill that out as best I could with where we are in terms of right now in December 2024. But I, I just will start by saying, you know, this, and we talked about this when we set the work plan, a couple of things. One is, this is just actually a fraction of the entire body of work that staff really undertakes on a, on a yearly basis. There's obviously a whole host of other tasks, administrative tasks, there's permits and permitting, the day to day functions of the town that we do to just keep operating and provide our services, our residents with services. That's not included in this particular report or in our attachment or in our work plan, as you, as you're well aware. And secondly, as I tried to make clear in this report as well, there are variety, this is not a static document. When we, when we, when the council accepts the work plan, as they did in February 20th, 2024, last year, we, we talk about it at that time, you know, this is, it's not a static document. Things come up during the course of the year. There's also things that become bigger issues than we expected them to be during the course of the year and do take up a significant amount of staff time. So we're trying to really show that in this doc, in this report and in this document as well tonight, just that we had 72 items on our work plan in February and we're up to 90 now, you know, when we look at it today. And it's, for me, I will just say, I can tell you from my experience, this is a huge, huge amount of work was accomplished this year. I feel extremely proud of the work that our, our team accomplished. And, you know, it's hard to put that into a table and show that. But this does, I think, try to make it at least clear as a public document to show that, you know, a lot's been accomplished. We, you know, just, this is not each item is the same. It's hard to compare each item because some items are more significant than others. Some require more staff time than others. Some are more challenging. Some weren't even accomplishing a project. They were like starting and beginning to think about and consider these actions. So, but nonetheless, next slide sort of just is a very simple graphic, but it just tries to quantify how many of those items were in the different categories. And then we just noting that we essentially added 18 items at the end at the end of our 2024, February 2024 work plan during the course of the year. And so I'll, I'll let you sort of lead the conversation, but I did want to highlight just very high level, a couple of projects that accomplishments from each department and show you sort of where we've been focusing a lot of our efforts and energy. Certainly in community development, one of the things coming off the heels of 23, adopting the housing element was sort of implementing the first phase of projects and programs. And Amy's here, and if you have questions specifically about this, certainly Amy can chime in. But there were quite a few ordinances we passed. I think importantly, we received grants to help predevelop, you know, fund predevelopment activities for one of our local property owners to start considering housing development, which is obviously first and foremost, the most important goal of the housing element was to try to bring in more housing. And I think the application we recently received and which I don't think you, like in the background, when we receive an application, it's all hands on deck. A lot of intense work goes into actually reviewing the application. There's a lot of deadlines. So there's a lot of work behind the scenes, but even receiving applications for housing, 100% affordable housing speaks to sort of the work that our teams doing in community, community development in terms of just making fostering that the opportunity for new housing in town. And obviously that will carry into next year. I think similarly, there's been a lot of another thing just to highlight on the housing front, a lot of properties are for sale, larger, these commercial sites, some of them that are housing opportunity sites. And we get a ton of calls constantly about what's the zoning and sort of having those conversations early on with prospective developers of housing. So just wanted to highlight that. Certainly more there. One of the things that I wanted to highlight in Parks and Rec, which we haven't spent a lot of time actually thinking about, or sorry, discussing in our public meetings is they've been working mostly Tim and Sydney on, on a new registration and facility reservation system, which is going to be launched January 2nd, I think it is, which will completely change how residents interact with the Park and Rec Department in terms of observing facilities, signing up for programs, viewing programs. The, the interface on the website will completely change. And so I think it's going to be a huge enhancement to how our community really interacts with the services that the Park and Rec Department is actually offering. And so I wanted to highlight that. And that's been a huge effort. Anytime you sort of dig into and try to adopt a new software system, you know, it also has the financial programming on the backend to interact with Daria's team as well. It's just a lot of work and a lot of problem solving. But it's also good because it forces you to, to think about your systems and your processes that you have. And so they've been working hard. Climate action, I think, just highlighting, you know, the conclusion of a tier effort on the energy reach codes, which were one of the major initiatives to try to reduce GHG emissions by making, by essentially having higher standards for energy efficiency in our building stock and applying those thoughtfully through public meetings and outreach to remodels, also ratcheting up the requirements for EV electric vehicle infrastructure as well through that. On the finance side, I'll just say the amount of work and energy, and this was a first for me to see, but we had four different bargaining units we were in negotiations with for new employee contracts. And the amount of quick number crunching that Daria and the finance team had to do was incredible. And it lasted, it was sort of sequential. Fortunately, that we started with certain bargaining units and then as, as you're well aware, we fire sort of concluded the, the analysis and getting to the finish line there with, with CMFA was the end. So, but it was a good four month period where Daria's team was supporting both myself, obviously, our chief negotiator, when we talk about the fire authority, supporting myself and our teams on that negotiation process. And on the backside of that, once we actually got approval, then it was actually the rest of her team implementing the salary and benefit packages and making sure that everybody understood what they were and walking through how to provide those new, some new benefits to. And then finally, I did want to focus a lot, you know, a little bit more time just on the public works side of things and just highlight this for the public works team. And I'm really mostly just focused on the capital projects, which is a list here. As you can see, starting with obviously the building that we're in now. But it, the list goes on and on. And I think we have to remember a little bit of where we were and how much I have at the bottom in terms of the capital expenditures. Back at 2018, 19, we spent in capital outlays about $2.6 million on town capital projects. That quickly ratcheted up. Obviously, that was around the same time we started to get sales tax funds through the three quarters cent sales tax, which basically brought that revenue, which was to be used for infrastructure and capital projects up to, you know, let's call it $4 million a year. I think we're at 4.1 million last year. After that, $2 million quickly in, in 1920, I have the numbers here. Expenditures, and I'm just talking about town infrastructure, went up to 4.3 million in 1920, 2021, 5.38 million. And then on to 2122 was another 5.2 million, 2223, 10.7 million. And actually, it's, it's, these are under the numbers I'm looking at, under, under valued the actual expenditures because there's not every project's on the list. I just said 10.8 million, but it's actually probably about a million more than that. So as you see on the slide, 2223 is about $12 million in town projects. So you add all of that up, I just, I just wanted to make the point that the amount of, of funds that have been expended on capital infrastructure projects in the town has been significantly increased over the last many years. And that's just a testament to the work that our public works department does in delivering projects. This is a list that was on our work plan. I mean, the amount of improvements just to town park with the bathrooms and the pickleball and skate park, not to mention town hall. The amount of improvements just to town park with the bathrooms and the pickleball and skate park, not to mention town hall, um, the, the town hasn't seen that sort of activity in real infrastructure projects. In many, many, many years, decades, I would have to say. So. Um, and that doesn't include some of the other work that's on here in terms of master planning and field maintenance and what so on and so forth. So. It's really impressive. I think it deserves to be highlighted, um. Uh, even if it's just in the setting here, but, um, I wanted to, uh, really be clear that. It's, it's a huge amount of work and not only that, it's, it's bringing in grant funds as well to supplement, uh, the town's own funds on that. So I think. It's important, we're, we're delivering on that promise through the sales tax measure to actually deliver infrastructure projects and that's. Uh, you know, I'm only focused here on. Uh, twenty twenty four, but obviously certainly if, if, um, I could go back, uh. Further and, and make the case. In more detail at some point, if that's. That's a desire. Um, and then finally. Not, you know, uh, at our admin team has been hard at work as well. Um, we have a last slide. Um, but it, you know, really the move, we had a big move of staff from one facility to the other, obviously had the contracts and, and negotiating those contracts with the bargaining units. Um, we've transitioned from HR, so that was a big effort. Uh, our admin team is, is. Small, but we're, we are pretty mighty, uh, between Lorraine and Rebecca, myself, we try to. You know, we're, 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 as you can see in the work plan, when you put departments, we're, we're involved with a lot of things. I mean, that also includes, um, Phoebe, um, as well, Mike Moriarty. Um, we've made a lot of strides, I think, in just. Uh, thinking structurally about how to improve our organization and. Continuing to do that, um, and we'll see some more of that next year. So. With that, I will stop, um, with, uh, tooting our own horn here a little bit, but, uh, le- stop and, and if you have any questions, please feel free to. Review of the work plan items.
Thank you very much, Adam. Really, uh, impressive. Do we have questions?
Could you email me, uh, PDFs of all these slides?
Absolutely.
I'd love that too. And that would be a nice thing to have going into the work plan meeting.
Of, of this, of the slides here.
So we sort of know where we are now.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can certainly put that as part of the staff report for that meeting.
Any, any other questions? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Doesn't look like it. How about online?
No hands raised from attendees online and. Push my email. No email public comment for this item.
Okay. So it looks like we don't have to take any action here, but are there any comments?
I have a couple of comments, um, and I always look at things differently. A lot of times it's not to downplay that the work the staff is doing. The seventeen items that were added, I went back and looked at staff reports. Staff reports and if some of those, they say this is not a work plan item. Others where it says work plant says N A. So all of a sudden to me, there's inconsistency. Because the staff report is saying it's not, but yet we're adding it to the work plan. Okay? That's one thing. I think that we're starting. I think the work plans, I don't want to say it's getting out of control. We're just starting this every single thing that staff is doing. And to me, I just think we need to take a step back when you come in January. And what I want to see is, I want to see is define what belongs in the work plan. And I think we need to have some structure around the way the work plan works. Um, couple that with. You know, you have staff that's working regular, their regular job. There's ninety tasks in here. In the budget, there's fifty two goals. I don't know what's going on with those goals. Few of them may overlap with the work plan, but I don't think they do. It just seems like it's overwhelming just when I look at the numbers. And then one other thing with the, the work plan also, when we come to January, twenty three of those items in there, they're repeat items because they're ongoing for years. I don't know if we need to pull those out and have something separate because I think there's a thing in there about the housing element. The housing element is going to go on there for the next eight years. So again, I just think again, to whittle this stuff down, I think we need to define work plan and we need some structure. Around it. So no offense, it doesn't become a free for all and we just start loading stuff in.
It's fair and maybe the council, the other council members can, can also comment on that. I think it's within our, the purview, reviewing of the twenty twenty four work plan as a comment, maybe. If that's a, an addenda item actually for the work plan, I mean, for the workshop, we could actually potentially have that conversation.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's why I think we just, again, it doesn't have to be a two hour conversation. You guys could, your staff can come up with the definition and maybe just some structure around it. And then we can talk about it. I just think we need to have, again, something more around it than just leaving it wide open.
Thank you. Um, wanted to start just by saying. How impressed I am in reviewing this work plan. I mean, that is ninety items, uh, is a lot. And to, to go through those ninety items and see that there were, I think, only four that we didn't get around to and only eight. Um, that we, that we started but didn't get to finish yet. I think it's really impressive and I didn't realize, uh, that there were, did you say it was seventy two originally and it went to ninety? So, so eighteen items that we added to the work plan throughout the year. Um, it's helpful to have that number because I feel like we're, you know. We, we understand that in this business, things come up from time to time and, and you've got to, you have to make time for them. Um, but I think. I certainly have never felt like I've had a clear handle on exactly what or how many things are coming up throughout the year. So to be able to see that it's eighteen and here they were is really helpful. Um.
And, and that speaks to actually a comment from council member Casiza, if I just may, real quickly, I think we put that they weren't on the original twenty two, twenty twenty four work plan. Um, I'm just noting them here and they weren't, they weren't on the work plan. I'm noting them here as an additional things that took. Staff, significant amount of staff resources, even though they weren't on the work plan. Just, just noted them here. I'm not amending the work plan, um, and so just wanted to.
But, and, and I would say that in my view, when we add things to staff's, uh. Agenda, when we ask you to do things throughout the year that are not on the work plan, whether it's stuff that's come up and really been put on us and has to be dealt with, or whether it's stuff that we are electing. Throughout the year to sort of say, hey, I know this wasn't on the work plan, but can we do this too? I view that as sort of a real time amending of the work plan, like the work plan is a living document. And I think. Um, even if, you know, just because something wasn't on the original work plan when it was approved in January, if we then ask you to do it and you do it, I think I see that as something that we should now. Be tracking as, you know, now part of the work plan. Um, so, so I, I, I actually agree with, uh, the, the way that this is being presented and, and, and tracked on here. Um, and again, I'm just really impressed. I think I, I would, I would agree with Fred's comments. I think let's. Uh, review again that those fifty two or whatever goals that are in the budget, because I think there's an opportunity to make sure that we've got synergy between. Um, the stuff that's in the budget, some of which I'm, if I had to guess is probably boilerplate that just gets copied, you know, and pasted year after year, um. Uh, you know, and, and maybe there's a way to tie that into the work plan or, or to like maybe just copy and paste the work plan. Anyway. Um, uh, I'll leave it at that, but I, I, I think there's, there's always opportunities for, um, further optimizing the, the way that we're operating here, but I, I do think overall this is a really impressive work plan and, and I like what I've seen. So thank you.
Um, I will just, uh, say that, um. You know, the, as we're, as we may be going forward in redefining what goes in the work plan. Um, I think that are what we call a work plan item. I think it is, um. Valuable to at least have the ongoing, um, processes and the ongoing. You know, year after year, those kinds of things that are never done and that are always being, um. Uh, revisited. You need to have those somewhere in the work plan itself. So that you know that what you are adding to that is realistic, that you can actually, you know. Um, you have the staff, you have the budget, you have everything to do it. And so there is a place in it for. You know, things that such as the, um, the housing element. To have a place in there as just reminding us of how much work there is to be done already. And then, you know, how much we can add. Um, so that would make us more realistic. So, but I'm all for, you know, redefining, you know, what is a new. You know, how are we going to add things to the work plan? How, how we're going to define what a work plan item is. Maybe there's a redefinition of what is, how we're gonna. Phrase the ongoing projects. Um, just because that seemed to be kind of a concern that, um, that Fred had. Uh, but anyway, I do want to say that I'm honored to work with such an amazingly competent. You know, level of experts, uh, within the town and a lot of towns don't have that. I mean. There are news reports of towns. You know, town councils doing terrible things that basically bankrupt the town and shame the town and all these things. And, you know, I always feel just. It's just amazing, the level of, of expertise that we have here and, and, um. You know, I, I hear, um. I was in a, um. Uber recently and the Uber driver said, you know, I drive all over Marin, the Corte Madera, that's a good looking city. You know, it's like the, he, she, he goes, you know, people in Corte Madera, they get things done. And I'm like, yeah, we do. Thank you. Anything, Jim?
No, I.
Okay. Um, I, I want to echo what Rosa and Eli said. We are a small town doing big things and it's really impressive. And. Every time I read your work plan, I'm like, oh my God, I'm so exhausted. All this, all this work. And, and a rate of eighteen per year, that's one point five, one and a half new things that are coming at you every month and. It's a lot. And yet I do believe that being nimble, you know, we have a work plan, but it's our job to. Jump into opportunities that come our way on any random month or take up problems that we see that need to be done. And. And if there's a mid-year adjustment needed that we need to say, okay, these two or three things that we put in the work plan are now not going to get done because we've decided that these other things are more important. I think we need that flexibility. So I think the work plan. Is kind of everything that we're doing to, you know, improve and, and run the town. And then as we add things to it, I think, you know, y- y- staff gets the right to say uncle, you know, when we get too much going on. We're not going to do as good a job doing it. So, um, I think we look to Adam and your staff to say, you know, to let us know when we're. When we're pushing too much, maybe, maybe ninety was the limit, maybe we won't go past ninety. But, um. I don't have any other comments and you don't need any action on that. So I guess we can move on. Everybody okay? Okay. And I do love the idea of getting that information from you to help us all be more prepared for January so that we can have a really productive. Work plan meeting.
And so we can be touting your accomplishments, uh, when we're out and about.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, thanks for your comments. Appreciate it.
Okay. So that takes us to number six D. Uh, this is discussion and possible action by the mayor to appoint council members, town staff and community members. To serve on joint powers, authority boards, standing committees and as liaisons to town advisory board bodies for the calendar year twenty twenty five. Um, do, Adam, do you want to set this up with a staff report first or?
Rain is going to take, uh, this one.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Ravasio and council members. The item before you is the annual process of appointments that's conducted following the reorganization of the town council. And selection of new mayor and vice mayor. Each year at the direction of the mayor, members of the town council, as well as town staff and. Selected community members are appointed to represent the town on various JPA boards, standing committees, ad hoc committees and. And also other committees, um, that are created and also to serve as liaisons to the town advisory bodies. Um, as a reminder regarding the liaison appointments. To the town's advisory bodies, the liaison's role is to work on creating a constructive relationship between the council and. Their assigned advisory body without implying any direction, review or. Oversight of the activities of the advisory body. And, um, in the, at the February twenty first, twenty twenty three meeting. When we first started doing the, um, liaison appointments, council gave consensus that. The appointments would rotate and that council members shouldn't assume any fixed appointments to any particular advisory body. So I just wanted to, um, bring that up. And then another thing to know is that in the list that's included in attachment one, we have the finance ad hoc committee. Um, that is a committee that's, we're actually recommending, um, dissolving because, um, the. The, um, two of the members on the ad hoc committee are now on our council, Jim Andrews and. Fred Casissa, and then one of the other members passed away recently. And so, um, our town manager actually plans to discuss matters of investment strategy. Long, long-term fiscal planning and debt financing analysis with members of the town council, including. Um, members Casissa and Andrews, who are prior members of that finance ad hoc committee. And, um, do that on an as needed basis moving forward. And therefore. We won't need to make any appointments to that ad hoc committee at this time.
And, and, and just if I can add a little bit of color to that last part, just because, you know, I want to first off say the. The finance committee has been a huge asset for staff in the town. If Dara was here, she'd say the same thing. I mean, it's been incredibly important to. Um, work with experts in our community on matters of long-term fiscal planning, when we have these conversations about debt financing and whatnot. It was more about giving the changes to with now council member Andrews being a council member, um. Um, also the dwindling of the, which changes the dynamics there. Um, unfortunately we did Annette DiSano and I will just say, um. The sudden passing, um, of. Very sad to receive that news. But, you know, I'll just. Recognize her contributions as well to the finance committee there. Um. But. We had only two other members essentially at that point in time. And so it, it's sort of. I, I'm just, I, I sort of raised the question of. Be thinking how we actually have those conversations moving forward. So, um, I just want to make sure that that's framed in that way. There is a structure which we sort of outlined here. Which is, um. You know, essentially, um, calling meetings and I. With the council members who have previously been on the finance committee, um, and I can, I, we can have informal meetings, um, to discuss matters, um. Bring in other, other community members as needed as well to have discussions. Um. There's the idea of a, an ad hoc subcommittee on a specific issue. If that comes up, that can always be done. Um, and then there's obviously also a full Brown Act, uh, committee option as well that. Um, we would have to, you know, would be advisory body like all the other, um, advisory bodies that we have in, in town. Obviously some come with a little bit more staff time work involved and others are a little bit more nimble and able to be maneuver around particular issues as needed. So. Um, throw that out there. Um, we can certainly also, I will say. I think for now, I would recommend not appointing somebody to that ad hoc committee and we can also have a, again, another conversation about. What, what the council would like to do rather than make a decision. We're not here to make a necessarily a decision tonight on. How we reformulate the, um, these discussions. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
And, and with that, um, that would be the last thing to know. Um, so, um, Madam Mayor, you can go through the list and. Um, determine who you'd like to appoint as a primary representative and an alternate. For those, um, most of them do, um, require an alternate.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Um. I'll, I'll have a remark on the financial, uh, ad hoc committee, but. First of all, I want to say I did start out thinking, okay, maybe we need to kind of shuffle things around. And then I started looking at it and realizing. That, um, our existing council, Rosa, Fred and Eli are doing great work on their committees. So I am, um. Keeping as little change as possible. Um. But I did talk to everybody, I think, so these should be pretty well, um, agreed to, but please, if I've overstated anything, don't let me know. I mean, do let me know. And then, um. Uh, i- i- if you don't, if, if it's too much, if you can cry uncle. And then um, i- i- if you don't, if, if it's too much, if you can cry uncle and we will find a way to appoint someone else if you really can't do it. So joint powers authority board, Central Marin Fire will continue to be Thomas and Ravazio with Casissa as the alternate. And Lorena, I have all these written down for you, so you don't have to write them all down. Okay? Uh, the Central Marin Police Council, Casissa and Ravazio with Beckman as the alternate, as it was. Central Marin Sanitation will continue to be Eli. The Community Development Block Grant uh, and Home is uh, Rosa, Thomas with Fred Casissa as alternate. Marin Clean Energy, Eli Beckman. Um, I'm currently the alternate, alternate on that, but if anybody else is really interested in that, I would be very happy to pass that on. So let me know. Marin Wildfire, uh, Jim Andrews will be the lead on that with Casissa as the alternate. Ross Valley Paramedic will continue with Fred on that with Rosa as the alternate. And Transportation Authority of Marin, we've decided to unleash Jim Andrews on the TAM board and with Fred as the alternate. Does that sound okay? Can we go on to the standing committees? Okay. Age-friendly Corte Madera, we'll keep that as it is with Fred Casissa as the uh, delegate and Rosa as the alternate. Association of Bay Area Governments, ABAG. Uh, a group I did not even know I was on because they never contacted me. It may be because Ravazio was the name associated to the time that we bailed out of ABAG. So maybe they think it's the same guy. I don't know. Only one meeting. Okay. And the Corte Madera Chamber of Commerce, I'm gonna um, take that on if that's okay. I think I can help out there and Eli will continue as the alternate. Uh, the Larkspur Corte Madera School District Liaison, Fred Casissa had a great experience doing the long-range planning. And so he will stay on there. The League of California Cities North Bay Division, Eli Beckman will be the lead. And I would like to be the alternate on that. Um, Marin County Council of Mayor's Climate Action Committee, um, that's me with Eli as the alternate. Very quite inactive group. They have no money. They don't do much. Uh, the Homeless Committee, MCCMC Homeless Committee, I'm gonna step up and um, get involved in that. Uh, the Legislative Committee, I will continue that with Rosa as the alternate. Oh, did they, was there an alternate before? Yeah. Who would like to be the alternate on the homeless? Does anybody have a, the, on the homeless committee?
Two things with that. I have a conflict, but.
Yeah.
I have a conflict that night, but it meets irregularly, to put it bluntly.
What, what night is it?
I can't remember if it's Thursdays, but usually if they meet, it's six o'clock at night and it was at the City of Saran Fall. Um, but again, I think last year, I think we met maybe once, maybe twice at the most.
Kind of sad. They used to be really active. Yeah, okay. Um, so we didn't decide on an alternate for that. Eli?
If it's Thursday nights.
Yeah. And if it's Thursday nights, I'm gonna have a conflict too. So I'm, maybe. That regularly.
Sounds like, like a bad. Um, you can put me down and if I can make it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Rosa. Okay. So I think I mentioned already the Legislative Committee. I will, I will continue on that. I'm only barely now just beginning to understand what they're trying to do. Um, it always seems like it's a big reach, but I guess we can make some progress there. The Marin Healthy Youth Partnership, I'm really enjoying interacting with them. And so Rosa, can we have you back as an alternate on that? Okay. Safe Routes to School, um, I'll, I'll continue to be the representative there. Um, and Jim, can you be the alternate?
Sevru.
On that. I think they meet uh, in midday, kind of four o'clock kind of thing, but I should be able to make those. Uh, Sea Level Rise Governance Steering Committee doesn't need an alternate, so that'll continue to be Eli. And Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee, I have Jim Andrews.
It can be a disaster. I'm good at that.
And then Rosa as the alternate. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, and Madam Mayor, uh, for Safe Routes to School, um, we wrote in there that for Greater FMC, staff recommends that the council members appointed to represent the town on TAM also represent the town on Safe Routes to School because funding for the program for Safe Routes to School comes from, comes through TAM.
Um, and right now.
That's fine.
Is that okay, Jim? We'll put you as, put Jim as the lead and I'll be the alternate then, so that they. That was a request from TAM?
Um.
Or from Safe Routes?
I think it's something that staff thought would work out better. Um, I just kept the information from uh, previous uh, recommendations. And um, you said you would be the alternate for Safe Routes to School?
Put Jim on the lead.
Okay. But then for TAM, we have Fred as the alternate.
TAM is Jim Andrews.
Yeah, and Safe Routes to School, I don't mind being the alternate.
Okay. All right. That sounds great. I'm, I've got a lot of them. I did a, I did a little tabulation and I'm, I would love to give that up. So, so um, that'll be Andrews and Casissa. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, that was, is that all? Questions on that page?
No questions.
And then as far as the finance committee, I just think it's a future agenda item. We should just talk about it because it, there was, you're right that it's been a valuable group. And I've really come to rely on, being a non-finance person, I really love that they are there. And I know that these guys are here, but it, it's nice to have uh, that kind of institutional knowledge and just local people who understand finances to be involved so that we have that in the event that things get wacky and sideways like they were at one time. I know we're in great shape now, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would agree with that because I think almost, I think instead, to me, ad hoc means it's a single purpose item, very limited timeframe. Like I've said on MWPA for doing a JPA, two months, you're done, that, it's gone. Um, where I think maybe we need to look at as maybe, I know it's more work, actually formalizing maybe the finance committee. I don't know if we can leave it ad hoc, but I would agree, we need to have a bigger discussion on that.
Right. Okay. And, and as far as the work on staff, you know, if there are ways to make it more efficient, we definitely want to hear that, you know? But they, maybe they don't have regular meetings. They certainly don't need to meet every month or anything like that. Maybe they meet once a year around budget time and other than that is on an ad-needed basis or whatever we can do to make it less of a.
We can bring it back from an agenda item and discuss the options and just the council can decide.
Awesome. Thank you. That's great. Okay, then um, the committee to which the town council is appointed, either staff.
I think.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember.
Oh, sorry.
The key thing about the finance committee is all of the planning that you guys are doing is predicated on the town having sound finances. And in the oh no, or two thousand ten area, the town lost that focus. And as a byproduct of losing that focus, they wiped out a goodly number of staff positions. When your folks are talking about adding uh, you know, the, the capital budget and how we're finally able to implement it, well, that's because we spent a decade rebuilding a engineering staff that had to be let go. Uh, and this was prior to Adam joining, you know, the, the, the uh, com- the uh, town. So, you know, I, 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 I definitely think that the, the, you know, the Finance Audit Committee should at least meet orderly or at least half every other, you know, every half year. But uh, if we lose, you know, the key thing is we've got a lot of sort of institutional memory in this town. And with the normal turnover of staff, the normal turnover of council people, we need to have some locus in town to maintain that uh, institutional memory. So anyway, that's my soapbox.
Yeah, and maybe if uh, we're, you know, creating a new finance committee, we put the word out for applications. You know, we might get people who um, can, can really help. I mean, not that these guys don't really help, but you know what I mean? Okay. So anymore, anything more on the, that answer that? Okay, great. Um, so I didn't make, I mean, I don't have any reason to make any changes on the town council uh, appointments of town staff uh, to represent the town. So those will remain as uh, unchanged and the council's not on any of those. But on the liaison, Fred, I'm wondering if you can go back on Parks and Recreation. I was really terrible at it. I, I don't, I, I, I just.
You wouldn't zap that. There's no complaints for your fine.
I really wanted it, but then once I did it, I realized I don't really want this. So um, um, but I would like to move back on sales tax oversight, if that's okay. I really enjoyed hearing and hearing their deliberations. And so we'll swap there. And then Jim, if you can take the B pack.
Okay.
And then climate action is Eli and flood control is Rosa, as they were. So, okay, is that, is that good? I think that concludes my appointments. Sound good?
Thank you, uh, Mayor Ravazio.
Here, you can pass that down. She can have that. Okay, so that brings us to council reports, uh, starting with our town manager.
I forgot about this part. All right. Um, so uh, I did have a couple of reports. Uh, one, I just, obviously this was a wild uh, weekend, um, so wanted to acknowledge that. Um, and just, you know, our crews uh, just did a great job being out there, clearing roads and helping um, CMFA and whatnot, um, just with cleanup, general cleanup. And so obviously, uh, we've heard the concerns about PG&E and the power outage, um, and the extent of it. Um, we do, I do um, have a sort of a scheduled meeting with Mark Van, you know, PG&E representatives. I will certainly relay the concerns that we've heard both tonight. And then we did get a, I think, a public comment. I don't know if it was yet to the council. Um, it wasn't related to the uh, agenda this evening or the council meeting. But we're aware of those and so certainly we'll, we'll do our best to uh, address uh, or just to relay those concerns to PG&E and see what information we can glean in terms of what caused it. I do think that's important and we can get that information. I also wanted to just say though, the um, and you, uh, I think maybe council member Thomas was closest to the, the actual tide and inundation that was coming up um, from the bay. But it was, I, I'm talking to RJ, uh, that was the highest. And, and that was almost the, the perfect storm that we are extremely concerned about and vulnerable to. Um, it had wind-driven storm surge um, with a king tide. And so preliminarily, we, we saw that as like an eight point three or eight point four tide, which we hadn't seen before. Um, and uh, you know, there are members of, I think, both the Flood Board, but our public works crew went out on the levee, Marina Village levee. It was right at the top of the levee, um, you know, almost to our sandbags. So um, just points out the real vulnerability and why we're so focused on trying to get the FEMA grants and start planning for that important project out there so we can actually beef up that burn. But it was a good reminder for everybody of just, it's all about the timing right now. I mean, even today, you know, that's, that's where the concerns are. So um, that was one I, on, on our side, I do, I do want to let uh, the council know, um, you know, we do have a battery backup system in the building. It's installed. We are waiting for PG&E permit to come through to turn it on. So we also have our own uh, issues, but, but I, the council should be aware of that. I know there's questions have come up through out in the community of sort of why the, you know, maybe the town hall wasn't up and running. But certainly, um, that's in process. We obviously didn't want to delay the opening of the building for that to get done. But it's, it's being uh, pushed through as, as aggressively as we can with our, with our contacts and liaisons as PG&E. Um, and then um, we did, uh, oh, I wanted to mention one thing about um, just to follow up on the HR contract. Um, we did end up, uh, after the meeting, we are breaking that into two separate contracts. Uh, one through the town, um, obviously. And then CMFA is going to have the other contract as well through uh, the organization and discussing that further. Our town attorney and Amy, um, you know, really the authority for engaging in services um, or from uh, an outside consultant or CMFA is through uh, their own internal sort of mechanisms for approving such contracts. And so we did that. Um, it's still within the authority, I think, the town contract of um, uh, to move forward with that. And we did introduce our new HR consultant to the team on Monday. Uh, her name is Chanel Seraldi. And uh, so we're getting a little bit of a transition with Janet before she retires on December thirty first. Um, and that are my reports.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a quick question of Adam?
Sure.
On the storm, was there any messaging to residents at all saying, you know, floods getting higher? Any messaging? Was there any contact with OEM? I was, I'm bringing this up because I know past Cove School, six trees came down and Paradise Drive was closed.
Right.
Um, going towards Tiburon. So if there's any evacuation, everybody would have had to go out. There's only one way to get out of there. So I just wonder if there's any messaging or any, again, contact with OEM just as a backup type thing?
Uh, OEM, well, there, our first responders were in contact with OEM. I'm not sure specifically what messaging they were able to get out to through their alert systems, um, specific around that. So I don't believe there were you, you know, frankly, I, I, I didn't receive any myself. But um, I'm not sure exactly what messaging came out from um, either OEM or through CNPA or CMFA on that.
It's just food for thought going forward, where I think as a town, we just should be taking the lead or partnering with CM, Central Marin uh, Police and/or OEM and not relying on them to get messaging out so we can protect our residents.
So, okay.
Uh, okay. How about we start with council reports? Why don't you go, Fred?
This is simple. On twelve, six, I attended the Chamber Mixer, which is over at the Best Western. And then that same night, I attended uh, RVPA and for once in a while, it was a regular meeting. Um, so it was kind of nice. And the only thing, I was appointed to a subcommittee to look at the lease with the town of Ross. So.
Eli?
On December fifth, I also attended the Chamber Holiday Mixer. It was fantastic as always. On December ninth, I attended a Transportation Authority of Marin meeting. Um, the big accomplishment there was they finally adopted uh, the final uh, the county's first countywide transportation plan. So that's like the big, long-term overarching blueprint for trying to make it all work in Marin County. So that was a, a big achievement there. Um, on December tenth, we had a Central Marin Sanitation Agency Board Meeting. Um, nothing too exciting to report from that. December eleventh, had a Cal Cities Executive Committee Retreat where we just worked on planning our programming and education for the coming year. And on December thirteenth, uh, we had the Transportation Authority of Marin Holiday Party. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim? Rosa?
Uh, just one thing. On December fifth, um, I attended the CDBG uh, meeting for uh, priority setting. And I realized I was, when um, Lorena was reading over our um, appointments and what our role is supposed to play, it's like, well, I can't be on the priority setting committee, but that's fine. I, I, I have been in the past, but I think that we hadn't codified that. But um, yeah, so, but anyway, it was, it was a great, we didn't, we didn't, we, what we did is we looked at the um, process, but we didn't actually set any priorities because the applications haven't come in yet. So anyway, that was the meeting.
I guess that brings it down to me. We had one with the Legislative Committee for MCCM. We did meet for over a half hour with Mike McGuire, who told us everything he is going to try to do in 2025. And he's living up to his reputation as being the Energizer Bunny and just wanting to get everything done. The big one he's working on is the insurance problem. And he's working on a law where if you do the hardening, if you do the work for your home, the insurance companies will be required to write. Now, at what cost, we don't know. And, you know, when businesses get forced into doing things, that usually makes them more expensive. But at least, at least it's a viable, seems to be a viable direction. And then lastly, ending on a good note, Thursday night is the Town Band Concert at Town Hall. I mean, at the Community Center. And I was so excited to be the emcee. I guess whoever's the mayor gets invited to be the emcee. But I will be away at a funeral on Thursday, and Rosa is going to take my place. So I'm very excited about that. And I thought the King Tide pop-up was brilliant. It was perfectly timed. It was the day before the tides and the day before the big storm. So congratulations on getting that media coverage. That was really, really excellent. And so I think that is it for reports. And is there any conversation other than what we already had about future agenda items?
Yeah, I have, when I like to sit at the next meeting, is have a discussion going to a two-year budget. I know that, I think Jim and Eli are familiar because they've gone through that process before. And I think we need to do it at, at the next meeting because otherwise, we're going to start getting into the budget season. Thanks.
Anybody else? He wants to go, he wants to investigate the possibility of a two-year budget.
But we don't have time to do it. That's what let us know.
Private discussion, figuring out.
Adam, you want to opine on that now, or?
If the council wants that to come before on the next agenda, we're happy to do that.
It is.
Sorry, I said, we're happy to do that if the council wants us to put that on the next agenda.
Just making sure it's not already like chock full.
Uh, no, we're going to have the mid-year budget revision. But no, I think we're in, certainly, it's a short, it's a relatively short.
Could be timely then, if it's coming with the, with the revision.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it'll be a two-year budget, and are we still going to be able to get a five-year projection every once in a while?
Well, I'd like to have Daria a part of that discussion, so I think we should bring it back for, or the January, that would be the January 21st meeting.
That is.
Okay, that will do it for tonight. We're going to adjourn in memory of Annette DeSanto from our Finance Committee. Adjourned?